Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Tuesday, January 21st at 7:00 PM. And our first item of business is to establish a quorum. We have all but one council member present tonight. The next item of business is disposition of the minutes for the regular session held on January 6th, 2020. I have a motion for approval of these minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and second for approval of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The minutes have been approved. We now have communications. Are there any items that council members wish to report on? Seeing none, then we'll move on to reports and communications from other elected officials. Law Director Eliason? No. Auditor Hecht? I think you have some information.
I am going to talk about proprietary funds for the city. It's sort of a complicated process that it is hard for people who don't do what I do to understand. And so, anyway, we've had a lot of discussions in the past about why we can't just take money from one fund and use it somewhere else. And the ones that we can't do that with are really almost any fund. The general fund, because it's mostly funded with general obligation tax dollars, can be used in other funds. However, we are not supposed to subsidize proprietary funds with tax dollars. So I'm going to read what I sent out. I tried to keep it short. You can ask any questions you want. And we'll see, you know, if this makes any sense. So a proprietary fund, I'll just throw this out there too, when we get audited, these funds are audited separately in our financial statements and our audit, and for a reason. It's used in governmental accounting to account for activities that involve business-like interactions, either within the government or outside of it. The two types of proprietary funds are enterprise and internal service funds. So the enterprise funds are the ones that operate what you would call outside of our internal services. An enterprise fund, like water, sewer, garbage, and parking garage, are used to account for any activity for which external users are charged a fee for goods and services. An activity must be reported in an enterprise fund under any of the following circumstances. The activity is funded with debt that is only secured by a pledge of the net proceeds from the activity. So that obviously means if we want to rehab our wastewater plant or our water plant and we borrow money, we have to collect those fees through our service charges and not from our general fund or any other additional tax. The activity's service provision costs must be recovered with fees as stipulated by laws and regulations. So all operating expenses and any kind of costs for the operation must be covered by the fees that we charge. The activity's pricing policy is designed to recover its costs. So nobody likes it when their water, sewer, or garbage bills go up, but we're required to charge enough to cover all of those services. And that's when that happens. An internal service fund, which is not so much in question usually by council or anyone, but you should know that it is also a proprietary fund, like our medical fund, our mechanics that are citywide mechanics, and our IT operations, who also service all departments in the city, is used to account for activities that provide goods or services to other funds, as well as departments or agencies of the primary government, or to other government entities on a cost reimbursement basis. This fund should only be used when the reporting government is the primary participant in the activity. When this is not the case, an enterprise fund should be used instead. So clearly, when we transfer money out of different funds, or any funds that have employees, into our medical fund to cover medical expenses, that's entirely within our departments. We're not offering that outside of a city operation. So are there any other questions for that? About why we charge the way we do? Why we can't use that money anywhere else? And how it's accounted for? Sometimes I get a little deep in the weeds with the accounting process.
Councilmember Reisman.
Going back to enterprise funds, you stressed the point, they have to pay their way.
They do.
And would that also include any debt that we would accumulate on that to do remodeling of the parking garage? So not only do they have to pay their way for maintenance and personnel, but also to service the debt on that loan?
Yes.
So that's where the money for the debt will come from? Strictly from there?
Yes. And that is how we have done it. If we borrow money, all the payments are made through the parking garage for those renovations. Same with the wastewater plant and the water plant. Oh, garbage. I see I have a typo in there, but it's the garbage fund. But it's the same thing, you know? And that money, because we've made some changes over the years where we contract that out and we don't do the garbage collection ourselves with city employees, we've been able to build up some revenue in there, which is a good thing. You know, eventually you're always going to need that. And we don't know, you know, the expenses for collection and recycling have gone up over the years. So we have to stay ahead of that as we do the other costs. All our OWDA loans are paid for out of those funds, whether it's water or sewer.
Mayor Patterson.
Stormwater is also a enterprise fund, is it not?
It is. It is.
And that's for, again, as was mentioned, with storm system, stormwater system repairs or upgrades like that that we've done on West Union across from Cats Island, or the, whatever it's called these days. You know what I'm talking about. That was one, so was 1804 Way and the new roundabout. Again, some water catchment systems down there were through storm.
Yes, it most certainly is. And it was a spinoff from the sewer fund. We used to pay for all of that out of the sewer fund, and it really needed to be separated because the activities are related but not exactly the same.
Well, thank you. And it's interesting to know that we do get audited on these separately, and so there's a good reason why we're very strict about it and not borrowing from one to another account.
Right.
Okay. Great. Well, thanks for the information. Mayor Patterson.
I just have two things for council. I did provide a document to council that looks like this. Just to give you a real quick update, the new deputy service safety director for the city put this together and has pulled together the event organizers for a lot of the events, and in particular, street closings. So what you have in front of you unfortunately isn't color-coded like mine, but I can get you a color-coded one. And it will provide for us a document that we can use moving forward to come to council with a slate of street closings for events, so we can get that done earlier, as opposed to what has happened in the past years where they seem to come at you, you know, 60, 90 days prior to the event itself. And that way, we can get this all handled in one fell swoop. So it's a nice document. It's also interesting just to look at, because you'll see there's events that require street closings and there's events that don't. It also shows you how we've been able to work with the event organizers to think about other locations as opposed to the traditional, "we want Court Street," you know? Instead, getting that to move around a little bit more. East Union has become more and more popular for having events, and it's an easier space to manage, and we'll continue to do that. So again, that's for your information. The second one, and I just feel like I really need to push this out, so council bear with me, this may come up every regular session, and it is the Richland Avenue pedestrian passageway, because we will be releasing that project in March, March 2nd, to be specific. And hopefully, what I sent you is a two-sided document. And if I didn't get this to you, I may not have gotten this to you. It does have the map. For the project itself, the detour route is going to be South Schaefer off of Richland Avenue near Bingham House. And take it, if you're going uptown, taking that up to West Union and then using West Union to get to the uptown area. It also has a couple other...
Could you point that towards the camera?
I certainly can, and I believe that this is also on the website. I don't know, Scott or Ryan, if you can zoom in on this, and I will do my best to stay So there you have it. I know that we've been posting it on bulletin boards around the city. But again, just want to get really ahead of this, because unfortunately, as is typical, we will have people who didn't know it was happening, and I get it, I understand that. But I want to message it as much as we possibly can. We will be using the variable message signboard as well, where that'll be up there detailing the, at least where you need to turn if you're going to go uptown when we do close Richland Avenue, because part of Richland Avenue will be closed to basically build a bridge.
Is Bodot perhaps willing to consider signage on the highway? So when we've got major events like commencement going on and the road's going to be closed? I know they set up signs on commencement.
Sure. President Nisley, I'm not sure. I can certainly talk to Director Hetty to see if that's in the works. It might be.
Yeah. And I think the more we can message people to try alternate routes rather than getting to that intersection will be the other thing, is that we have other avenues of going in, either by Columbus Road or Stimson Avenue or Union Street.
As a south sider myself, my plan is basically what I'll do, I've done this with other projects, is I will be going, using 33 and crossing, going over the Stimson Avenue Bridge and into the uptown area and using Stimson as my way to come in. And I would encourage others to do the same.
All right. And thanks for getting this information out on the upcoming events. We've talked about that off and on for years and said we wanted to get coordinated on that. Okay. All right. We will move on to ordinances for first reading. The first one being an ordinance authorizing participation in Sourcewell, a cooperative purchasing program. And this is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. The Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program will be used by the city for specialty items like a vac truck. And participation in this program requires city council approval. Law Director Eliason has reviewed the program, and it follows under the Ohio Revised Code. Director Hetty has indicated that other counties such as Ross County Engineer's Office uses this, and we can request information from them if needed. Let me read the pertinent sections here. Whereas, Ohio Revised Code, Section 9.48, provides the opportunity for political subdivisions to participate in a joint purchasing program operated by or through a national or state association for the acquisition of equipment, materials, supplies, or services. And whereas, through participation in said association, the city of Athens is exempt from any competitive selection procedures otherwise required by law if the contract in which it is participating was awarded pursuant to a publicly solicited request for a proposal or a competitive selection procedure of another political subdivision within the state of Ohio or in another state. So hopefully, this program will allow us to get the best prices for large pieces of equipment.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from council member, administration, or the audience? Okay. Yes. Councilmember Fall.
I think that, yeah, and going through in the future, it would be good that when we look at procurement and stuff, to kind of look at the sustainability, long-term sustainability of the procurement or the, you know, kind of practices. This big equipment may not match with that, but some of the other procurement and stuff we do. I think that would be a good way to implement some of the sustainability plans that we have. Thank you.
Ordinance 220, an ordinance authorizing unneeded or obsolete municipal personal property to be sold by internet auction, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. This is our annual city council approval to sell disposable items in the city on the internet. I believe approval is necessary for items over $1,000. The pertinent section here is Athens City Council, in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, Section 721.15D, hereby authorizes the service safety director or his representative to contract with a representative to conduct internet auctions for the selling of unneeded or obsolete municipal property, and shall require the bidder to pay all fees, taxes, and charges. Auction items will be advertised for no less than 10 days, including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays. Thank you.
Comment? Yes. Mayor Patterson.
Just one comment, and that is that, of course, administration does have to come before council to get authorization to dispose of items. This is just for us to be able to use the internet auction once the council has released those items for disposal to administration.
Point of clarification, is it over $1,000 that the administration must request approval?
Yes.
For disposal? For disposal. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? We'll move on to ordinance 320, an ordinance authorizing the auditor to borrow up to $500,000 towards the purchase of a new fire truck and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. Ordinance last year, 018, 011819, authorized the service safety director to enter into a contract to buy a truck from the Finley Fire Equipment Company. And these next three ordinances are all related to that approval. The pertinent sections of this ordinance read, "The auditor is hereby authorized to borrow up to $500,000 on a one-year note at the most favorable interest rate toward the purchase of a new fire truck." The 2020, Section 2, "The 2020 Appropriation Ordinance, 13019, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $250,000 to Capital Improvements Fund, 580, TC 500, and $500,000 to General Fund Fire, 101.208, transaction code 500, and increasing the total appropriations by said amount."
And I believe that we may have a need to suspend this. Is that true, Auditor Hecht or not?
So the mayor could maybe address this. We've been talking about this fire truck since last year, probably November, at least all of December. And I, goodness, you know, I'm not the one handling the contract or anything like that, but we are trying to get the best deal that we can, which the cost estimate always goes up. And so we have a really good interest rate, and, you know, I don't know, mayor, I'll leave that up to you. That's really...
And I think the next one, though, the clerk was pointing out to us, is the bond. And we have time restrictions on that one, so we may need, because it's got a February, February 1. So we need to move forward, I think, just because we're needing to move forward with oh four, the next one that we may need to move forward with, oh three.
Right. You're right. And so we should do all of them.
Okay.
Actually, there's three of them related to this.
I agree. And the vendor has also been gracious in allowing us to hang on to a, I believe it was $24,000 reduction in cost, but that also has time limitations to it, for us to maintain that savings, and that's substantial savings to the city.
Are you suggesting suspending the rules tonight?
Correct. And so if I'm understanding what the auditor's saying for three, four, and five, all those ordinances, and then because of time restrictions, we're also going to be suspended on six and seven, which are on different topics, but unusual set of circumstances with the fire truck and then with previous years, prior years' bills, so... So Councilmember Crowell, if you would...
So I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 00320 for reasons of financial expediency.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. Any other comments on 0320? We'll move on to the next ordinance, President Nisley.
In fact, now you'll make a motion to approve.
Oh, sorry. So I make a motion to approve 0320.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 320. Any other comments or questions before we vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 420 is an ordinance providing for the issuance of $500,000 of notes by the city of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the cost of acquiring a new fire truck and related equipment, and declaring an emergency, and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. Do we need to make a motion for each one? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 0420 for the previously stated reason of getting our financial ducks in order.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Crowell.
Okay. I will now read the pertinent sections of this ordinance. Whereas this council has heretofore, by proper legislation, declared the necessity of acquiring a new fire truck and related equipment. Whereas the fiscal officer of this municipality has heretofore estimated that the life of the improvements constituing the project, the fire truck, is at least five years, and certified that the maximum maturity of the bonds issued therefore is 10 years, and of the notes to be issued in anticipation thereof is 15 years. Whereas this municipality expects that principal and interest on such bonds and notes will be paid from the general revenues of this municipality, and particularly contributions toward the project to be received from Ohio University, and, in the case of such notes, proceeds of such bonds or renewal notes, collectively called the revenues. And finally, whereas the Hocking Valley Bank in Athens, Ohio, has agreed to purchase an issue of such notes upon the items set forth herein, I make a motion that we approve this ordinance.
Second. Okay. So we have a motion and second for approval. Are there any other comments or questions about this ordinance? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. And this is the last one related to the truck. And this is ordinance 520, an ordinance amending ordinance 11819, authorizing the service safety director to enter into contract with Finley Fire Equipment Company, Inc., to purchase a fire pumper truck, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. For the aforementioned reasons, I would like to suspend the rules for ordinance 0520.
Second. Here we have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. Pertinent section, Section 1. Section 2 of ordinance 11819 is hereby amended to read as follows. Section 2, "The service safety director is hereby authorized to expend up to $750,000 as follows: $250,000 from Capital Improvements Fund, 580, transaction code 500, and $500,000 from General Fund Fire, 101.208, transaction code 500, for said purchase." I move that we approve this ordinance.
Okay. Second. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 520. Any other comments or questions?
Just one. And so I saw in ordinance 0420, the mention of Ohio University, you know, I'd never want to make assumptions, but new truck, probably new conversations, but those conversations are going well, that the university is looking to continue a similar type of support for the new, for the new equipment?
I believe that we are in year three of our second five-year commitment from Ohio University. Those conversations are going on, and I anticipate it continuing on as has been for the last eight years.
Thank you.
Councilmember Grace.
Just a typographical note on the number. The 500,000 has just extra zero.
Should be a very different contract.
Yes.
Wait.
Good, it's not in the wrong place, but on the other side of the comma. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you for seeing that.
It is not a $5 million truck.
No. There's a comma in there, but, yeah.
So we have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 520. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 620 is an ordinance amending the 2020 appropriation ordinance and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 00620, to be able to pay our bills in a timely manner and to keep up with our monthly record-keeping.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended.
Thank you. Section 1 of the appropriation ordinance reads, "The 2020 Appropriation Ordinance, 13019, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $36,208 to General Fund Fire, 101.208, transaction code 500, for a grant that has been awarded for extrication tools; $7,200 to Recreation Fund, 270, transaction code 500, for equipment at the West State Street Park ballfields; and $3,600,000 to Medical Insurance Fund, 866, transaction code 300, to pay 2020 medical bills and increasing the total appropriations by said amounts."
And so would you like to make a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 0620.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor... Sorry? Yes. Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Nisley. I just remember from last week at committee, Member Fall raised a question about fees paid by Sandlot Baseball or individuals who use the fields. Do we have any further information on that?
We do not. There is a meeting that is scheduled with Sandlot, but no conversations have taken place between the last meeting and now.
Okay. Thank you. And I know that the fees are, would be helpful. They also have made improvements to the ballfields in the past, too, with their own, with their own funds.
Yes. I'm comfortable that it is appropriate for the city to make the repairs regardless of, without knowing those, but I did want to follow up and would like to know that information.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 720 is an ordinance authorizing the payment of a prior year expense and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 00720 for the reason that it is a prior year expense, and so we would like to pay this bill that is due.
Second.
We have a motion and seconds for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the rules have been suspended. Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. This... This authorization is to pay for the ballfields that we mentioned in the appropriation ordinance. This equipment is for new bases on the fields, as well as the plastic safety liner on the outfield fence to keep people from injuring themselves at the top of the fence. Section 1, "The auditor is hereby authorized to expend up to $7,200 from Recreation Fund 270, transaction code 500, to pay a prior year expense to BSN Sports." I'd like to make a motion to approve 0720.
And Auditor Heck, yes?
I was just going to comment that the reason this is a prior year bill is that the rent department had a purchase order in place last year, and these supplies and equipment were already ordered last year, but we had to close that purchase order at the end of the year we were closing our blocks. And the reason it's, has to be approved by council is because it's a prior year bill over $3,000. So every time somebody forgets about a $20 or $100 bill, we don't have to come to council, but if it's over $3,000, we do.
So we do have a motion. Do we have a second? Second? Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of 720. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 820, an ordinance amending Ordinance 13119, the 2020 staffing levels, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. This is a title change within the Arts, Parks, and Recreation Department. The Arts, Parks, and Recreation Department is considering reorganization, and this is the first step in that plan. I'll read the section here. Section 1, "Ordinance 13119, Staffing Levels Are Hereby Amended to Change the Cemetery Position Title From Recreation Labor Supervisor to Parks Maintenance Division Manager, a copy of which is attached here, too, and incorporated herein by reference." Thank you.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
President Isley?
Yes.
It was my understanding that this was related to some reorganization that has already happened, is that, but that we're just sort of catching up with the, re-adjusting the title of a job someone is already doing.
Right, it's an existing position, and they've had some other people now that are reporting to them.
The organization was done towards the end of last year, but, yeah, different duties and adjusted pay rates, so title to go with it.
Thank you.
Ordinance 920 is an ordinance amending Ordinance 5219, granting an enhanced access easement to allow utilities to property contiguous to Hope Drive, introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. This is to change actually the paperwork. It used to be, this is where Head Start was hopeful, starting a Head Start Education Center, but that fell through, so now it's basically taking the enhanced right-of-way, making it instead of a specific user into a wording, there is a privately owned tract of land at the end of Hope Drive, so that in the future, with some other project that would go forward, that would be a placeholder for that project. This is required because the piece of land is pretty much not usable unless the utilities go across it via an enhanced right-of-way.
Thanks, okay. Any comments or questions? All right. Ordinance 1020 is an ordinance granting a special right-of-way permit to Ohio University, owner 338 West State Street, to allow a ground-mounted sign, and is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. Same thing with the right-of-way permit. This is for the university to put a identification for what I know as the secret garden, the plant biology area back there, so that it's a wayfinding from the university, so it will look like the university's wayfinding signs. Thank you.
Okay. Comments or questions? Ordinance 1120 is an ordinance granting a special right-of-way permit to Ohio University to allow a historical marker on Mulberry Street near Baker Center and junction with South Court Street, introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. Once again, a right-of-way permit. This specific one is with a historical marker about a lynching that occurred in the area, and it will be put forward by the university. It will look like the rest of the historical markers in the city.
Okay.
Thank you. I think rather apropos for Martin Luther King's...
Thank you. Okay. Any comments or questions? Ordinance 1220 is an ordinance granting a special right-of-way permit to Harry Levine, owner 40 Hooper Street, for lawn purposes to meet lot size requirements for an existing historic structure, introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Great, thank you. This particular one is another right-of-way permit. I think that the right-of-ways are sometimes easel, easy, like a sign. Other ones are a little more difficult because they have a lot of convoluted history with the land use. Given the fact that this is a rather convoluted one, it is going forward for some land that the city has ownership slash control over and allowing for certain requirements for lot acreage and stuff for the person who is at 40 Hooper Street to develop that housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? 1320 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of softening salt for the water treatment plant and introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. This is an ordinance, as the title says, pretty self-explanatory. The city does need to purchase salt for the water softener at the water treatment plant, and the pertinent section of this reads that the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expend up to $165,000 for the purchase of that salt.
Comments or questions? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Reisner.
This thought just occurred to me. I know this type of salt is not used for roads or streets or anything, but we do use salt for the new pool, correct? Does this be the same type of salt, or is that a different quality?
Counselor Reisner, I don't know. I can certainly find that out for you, that information.
Might be able to kill two birds with one stone.
Interesting.
That's the case.
I will, I'll find that out for you.
Okay, thank you.
Sometimes we have done that, where we contracted for both types of salt from one place. It just depends on the circumstances, I guess, but it's not quite the same salt. The water, I don't think they're even using much salt at the new pool, to be honest, but the water treatment plant, because that's water that people drink...
Sure.
...has to have no residue in it and no impurities and things like that, and so...
We do use sodium, though, with the new pool.
Yeah.
That's the chlorine system, is using that to create a brine and then, but again, I will check on it, but you're correct in that this is very different from road salt.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thanks. Ordinance 1420 is an ordinance authorizing disposal of certain vehicles no longer needed for a municipal purpose and introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. Yes, this we discussed last week in committee, and different departments, including the Fire Department, Police Department, and Engineering and Public Works, have provided to us a list of vehicles that they would like approval to dispose of, and I did read through the entire list last week, so I don't think we need to do that today, but there are a total of 19 vehicles on the list.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Ordinance 1520 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a dump truck chassis for the Engineering and Public Works Department, introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. Again, the Engineering and Public Works Department is in need of a new dump truck chassis to use for asphalt patching throughout the city, and they have requested the authorization to expend $70,000 for the purchase of that truck.
Comments or questions? Move on to the next. Ordinance 1620 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a vacuum truck for the Engineering and Public Works Department. This is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. More equipment purchase authorization, and the city is quite desperately in need of a new vacuum truck, from my conversations with our Director of Engineering and Public Works. And Section 2 of this ordinance reads that the 2020 appropriation ordinance 13019 is hereby amended to appropriate, from the unappropriated balance, the sum of $300,000 to Sewer Storm Water Fund 755 TC 500, $20,000 to Water Fund 740 TC 500, and $80,000 to Sewer Fund 750 TC 500, and increasing the total appropriations by said amount. The cost of this new vehicle is to be distributed among those three entities.
And any questions or comments? Councilmember Cottis?
Did, I did have, and this is just rhetorical, basically, have they already been testing this unit out? I think, I didn't, I didn't know if they had been given the, they were doing some work out on Stimson Avenue one day, and I just walked out in there, and they were, they were kind of testing out a piece of equipment, but I don't know if it was a jet truck, like something that actually blasted stuff out of the, out of the, you know, I don't, this seems to be maybe a slightly different machine.
Yeah, this one, as the name implies, it's, we can use this to clean out catch basins, you know, it'll literally vacuum, suck stuff up out of the ground as needed, as opposed to the jet truck that you're referring to, is one of the ways in which we'll clear sewer line clogs is to jet them to get whatever it is that's in there out of the way.
I saw it.
I believe that our engineers hoping to use the Sourcewell contract organization for the purchase of this truck.
Councilmember Crowell.
Just to note, a typo again in this ordinance. In Section 2, we have the written words $50,000, but the figure in parentheses is $20,000, and then that repeats the next one, $50,000, and the figure is $80.
I just noticed one myself. There is, there's two Section 2s, and there needs to be a Section 3. That's small.
Okay. All right. Great, great to see this. We've got great editors tonight. Mayor Patterson.
This council is a great example of what Auditor Heck was describing earlier, where this particular piece of equipment, if you look again carefully at Section 2, it speaks to the Sewer Fund, the Storm Fund, and the Water Fund, all being payers for this piece of equipment, because this is a piece of equipment that will be shared by those three entities. In other words, had we gone down this path with only having one fund paying for it, you know, technically only that particular proprietary or enterprise funding entity could be the user of this truck. So this is why we have all three, again, Storm, Sewer, and Water, paying a portion of this particular truck.
Move on to Ordinance 1720, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a water valve exercising equipment, introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. And as we briefly discussed last week, our water valves do require exercising to keep them movable and able to be turned on and off as necessary. So this is authorizing the Service Safety Director to expend up to $90,000 from the Water Plant Fund 740.637 TC 500 for the purchase of this equipment.
Yeah, great, thank you. Ordinance 1820 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an LPA, federal local let project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, for the construction of the Safe Routes to Schools Grant Street Project Number 331, introduced by Councilmember Cottis.
President Isley, thank you. We talked about this at committee last week, and then we stopped in order to determine exactly which side of the street the sidewalk was located on. I'm happy to report the, we did figure that out. That's on the east side, and so that is the same side as Boliana that ties into Grant Street. This project is 100% funded by ODOT through their Safe Routes to Schools program. This is a, these are dollars that are left over from 2016, where they were trying to apply a sidewalk in another, on another project, and it didn't, for whatever reason, it didn't happen. So there is a timeline to get this spent, or else we will get dinged by ODOT, which could hamper some future projects. This is also what they call an LPA project. It's a little bit different in that the city will be the contractor for the project, but ODOT will be 100% responsible for paying for the project.
Any comments or questions? Mayor Patterson?
Just to be the first, admit that I did make a mistake in terms of which side of the street that was on. I was led to understand that it was going to be on the west, but it is the east, and the reason that it is on the east side of Grant Street is that it makes for an easier turn radius for someone coming off of Stimson Avenue who is heading westbound to ease around that corner, and the other is storm. This would have cost a lot more had we had the sidewalk on the west side, because we would have had to get really creative with how we tie into the storm line that runs through that area. So that's the reason why. So I apologize, council, for all the confusion last week, but we did clear it up.
Ordinance 1920 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into contract for construction of the Safe Routes to Schools Grant Street Project Number 331, introduced by Councilmember Cottis.
President Isley, thank you. So this is the second piece of legislation for the Grant Street project. It basically allows the city to start advertising for this contract. This is a direct pay, though, so there, when we, when we have a bill that's due, we basically contact ODOT. ODOT will then pay the subcontractors and contractors for that work, and, but we have to have this piece of legislation in place as kind of bookkeeping.
Right. Any comments or questions? Ordinance 2020 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an LPA, state project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, for a bridge painting project within the corporation boundary on State Route 50. This is PID 79207, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Cottis.
President Isley, thank you. Now, this is the LPAs that I'm used to seeing, so this is just a straight boilerplate, one page, no, I'm sorry, it is a total of four pages speaking with ODOT. They are doing some work on two bridges on Route 50. These are over on the south side, Kimes Curve, coming in from, from the Albany direction, so both of those bridges are going to be painted sometime in 2020. We don't have an exact start date on when that project is happening, but ODOT will pay 100% of those costs.
Okay. Any comments or questions? All right. We'll move on then to a one-reading resolution. This is Resolution 120, a resolution supporting the Bipartisan Ohio Fairness Act, and this is introduced by all members of council, and I believe Councilmember Cottis, you're the one that drew this to our attention and...
President Isley, thank you. I'll just go straight into Resolution 0120. This is a resolution supporting the Bipartisan Ohio Fairness Act, whereas the Ohio Senate and House of Representatives are currently considering the Ohio Fairness Act, the Senate Bill 11, House Bill 369, and whereas this legislation amends Ohio anti-discrimination laws to include sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression as protected classes, expanding legal protections in housing, employment, and access to public accommodations. And whereas in 1998, this council reaffirmed its commitment to diversity and inclusion by prohibiting discrimination in housing, employment, and public accommodations... by prohibiting discrimination in housing, employment, and public accommodations on the basis of sexual orientation. And whereas in 2010, this council strengthened its commitment to fairness and tolerance by adding the protected categories of gender identity and expression to the city's existing non-discrimination policy. And whereas in 2017, this council enacted a ban on the harmful practice of conversion therapy and prohibiting any efforts to change sexual orientation or gender identity with a minor. And whereas the Ohio Fairness Act would empower all Ohio residents to more fully contribute in the workplace, engage in commerce, and participate in civic life without fear of Now therefore, be it resolved that the council of the City of Athens, Ohio, the city of, this is section one, the City of Athens strongly supports the Ohio Fairness Act and urges members of the Ohio Legislature, Legislature to act with fairness and justice in ensuring that all Ohioans enjoy freedom from discrimination. What I like about this, this resolution is that it does go back and give that historical sense that, that the city has been in support of this for a long time and, and we as a council are just following in former councilpeople's footsteps to continue working forward on this mission.
Any comments or questions? Or do we have anybody who wants to make a comment? Yes, and if you need, want to make a comment, you need to come up to the lectern and sign your name in and your name and address and if you represent a group.
Just to say that, to add to the historical record, the city also endorsed with a similar resolution, marriage equality, in 2015. Just wanted to add that.
Right. If you could give us your name and address and if you represent a group.
Absolutely. Council President Nisley, members of council, on behalf of Equality Ohio and the LGBTQ community here in Athens and across the state, I just wanted to thank you for your support here, across the board, and making this a really easy ask. This bill is obviously an important first step in ensuring lived and legal equality for LGBTQ Ohioans, and Athens County has long been a leader in doing that. Thank you again for your work in service of our city and support of the LGBTQ community. Thank you.
Thanks for being here tonight. Thank you for your work. Much needed. So we have the resolution and we need a motion.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. And second, just so we make it official.
Yes, I'd like to make, I'd like to make an emotion to adopt Resolution R. 0120.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We have some announcements and other business, first of which, so I don't forget, is that we will be having a committee meeting next week, and I do believe we will have finance and personnel meeting of the whole, and committee of the whole. Are there any other, does service safety or transportation need to meet?
There might be planning.
And there may be planning. Right, okay. Councilmember Crowe?
I just wanted to make sure that the public knew that there is a regular auditor meeting that includes a quorum of the finance and personnel committee on Tuesdays at 3:00 PM on the first floor conference room of the city building.
Thank you. Okay. And do we have any other general announcements? I think there is a farmer's market, public forum, and is that Thursday?
The 23rd.
The 23rd, so it's Thursday night at 6:00. I think, I believe at 6:00 PM at the community center.
6 to 8.
6 to 8. So please, yeah, please, anybody who's interested in discussing that, learning more about the plans, I'll have designs. There's a design illustration, I believe, on the city website, on the front page, so that's all, that other place to look.
And it's, it's not a, it's not a two-hour meeting. You have a window to show up and engage as much as you want.
Correct. So if you get off work at 6:30, join us at 7:00. Okay. All right. Now we have a series of about four or five other motions for approving things. One of them is the motion to accept the December 2019 credit card transactions. Do I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, those credit card transactions that report has now been approved. And now we have a series of appointments. They, these are basically reappointments to different city commissions. The first one being the zoning appeals board. And I believe Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I move that we reappoint John Golsey for another three-year term for the zoning appeals board. He's currently the chair of the board. I move that we accept his gracious offer for three more years.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second for John Golsey's reappointment to the zoning board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And thank you, Mr. Golsey. We'll move on to the disabilities commission and we have a reappointment, and I believe Councilmember Smedley will take care of that.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the mayor's recommendation that we reappoint Barry Dilly to the disabilities commission.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and second for the reappointment of Barry Dilly to the disabilities commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That's approved. Thank you, Barry. Next is the Athens Municipal Arts Commission, and I believe Councilmember Reisner has this.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I do. I'd like to make a motion that we, for reappointment of Ann Judy, Kelly Lawrence, and Scott Winland for two-year terms beginning January 1, 2020, expiring December 31, 2021.
Second. So we have a motion and second for the reappointment of three municipal arts commission members. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And we have one final reappointment to the Housing Appeals Board. Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Nisley. I would like to make a motion that we confirm the reappointment of Nicholas Bitner. He is CFO and principal architect for BDT Architects and Designers to the Housing Appeals Board.
Second.
And thank him for his service.
So a motion and second for the reappointment of Nicholas Bitner to the Housing Appeals Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, and thank you for that. And at the end of the meeting, we always have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items that have not been covered on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that's wishing to speak? So they have three minutes. If not, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned at 7:58 PM. Thank you very much. See you next week.